Good evening, James Jet Superintendent. Calling this evening's meeting to order at 7:04 PM. This is a school committee reorganization meeting. Before we get started, I would like to congratulate and welcome new school committee members Anna Vagis and Selena Miranda. Congratulations and welcome to the Milton Public School Committee. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. At this time, I would like to make a motion. Make a motion to not for nominations of the Milton Public School Committee Chair. I would like to put that motion out. Member White?
I would like to nominate Ada Rose Maron to be Chair.
Do we have the second to motion to open it for discussion or? Okay.
I'll second it if we do.
Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, are there any other comments or recommendations for Chair of the Milton School Committee? At this point, I would do a roll call. Member Carol?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Rosemarin?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Vagis?
Yes.
And Member White?
Yes.
Congratulations to our new Chair of the Milton Public School Committee. Member Ada Rosemarin, now I should say Chair Ada Rosemarin. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I would turn this over to the new Chair of the Milton Public School Committee, Chair Rosemarin.
So we also need to elect a Vice Chair of the School Committee. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would like to nominate Dr. Elizabeth Carroll to be the Vice Chair of our School Committee.
Very good.
I'll second that.
Wonderful, thank you. Shall we do a roll call vote? Dr. Carroll, do you accept that nomination? Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
And Dr. Carroll?
Yes.
And Chair Rosemarin, yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you. So with that, we will adjourn from our reorganization meeting and move on to our regular Milton School Committee meeting. And I will call the meeting to order now at 7:07 PM. And we have a couple of items on the agenda. Do we have any changes or subtractions to the agenda? Many of the members. Okay. So our first item on the agenda is a school building committee report. And since the Chair of the School Building Committee, Sean O'Rourke, is engaged in the warrant committee meeting tonight, I will be presenting that presentation tonight. And I wonder if somebody has the presentation, the PowerPoint, that we could share that I can walk people through. I don't know, Superintendent Jet?
Yes, give me one second, I'll try to retrieve that.
Thank you. While Superintendent Jet is looking, I will just explain the the timing of this. I would not have put this on our agenda for this evening's meeting. Typically, this is just a reorganization meeting and we call it a night. But the timing of the due date for this statement of interest to the School Building Authority is that it's due on Friday. And so it does require approval by both the Select Board and the School Committee. And the Select Board reviewed it and took a vote on it last Wednesday. And it's our job tonight to do a review and hopefully approve the the statement of interest, which we will then submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority on by Friday. I'm hoping that we can get it in by tomorrow. Any luck Superintendent Jet?
Yes, I have it. Give me one second, I'm gonna share my screen in just a second.
Great, thank you.
Just let me know if you could see it. Give me one. Is this?
No, that is not it. That is, those are the attachments. There is a PowerPoint that is specifically for the School Committee.
I have it. Do you want me to share my screen?
You have it, Lizzie?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, if if you if you can do that, I am just not great at sharing my screen or I would do it myself. I'm sorry.
No problem. Let me see if I have the access to do that. Superintendent Jet, this will stop and if I start sharing my screen, yours will stop. Is that okay?
Yep.
There were many attachments that go along with the statement of interest. Thank you.
Oh, no, I don't want to share it. I apologize.
There you go. Fantastic. Thank you so much, Lizzie. So this is about the statement of interest that's required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority to basically get our foot in the door with the MSBA for their funding support for a school building project that we are seeking. If you could go to the next slide, please. So for the go back one, there we go. So we, as I mentioned, we sought the Select Board approval last week and we need the School Committee's vote votes to authorize submission of the SOI. And this is the very first step in the MSBA School Building Construction Funding Pipeline. Without this application, we will not find out if we're eligible. We need to join this system at this point in time. This is the due date for this year is Friday. By submitting this statement of interest, we are making no commitments on behalf of the town at this time. And there's also no guarantee of acceptance by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It's a very competitive process. This year, this past year, there were 15 SOIs accepted out of 71 submissions. And this is, as many of you know, this is our third time submitting. So much of this will look familiar to to those of you who've been on School Committee before. Next slide, please. So the MSBA process is the application is due on Friday. That is their filing deadline. We are getting these required votes by the Select Board and School Committee. And then between July and December, MSBA does their due diligence based on the applications that they receive. They review their submissions, any documents that accompany them and be sure that everything is there. In some cases, they will conduct senior study visits. They did a visit like that in Milton two years ago, the first time we submitted. Last year, they felt it was not necessary because they had already done it. And then eventually, in late January, early, late December or early January 2023, they will recommend statements of interest for invitation into what they call the eligibility period. And next slide, please. So the eligibility phase, which is the first phase, they have their their system is sort of made up into modules of activity. The first module or first phase is the eligibility phase. And they give school districts up to 270 days. So it would take us through, actually, January 2020, September 2024. But they, during that time, they review compliance certification in terms of our building. They check to be sure that our School Building Committee has all of the required members. And I believe we do need to add a few members based on MSBA requirements. They'll go through our profile for the our program, maintenance practices. They'll do what they call design enrollment, which is basically a second look at our enrollment projections that we get from NESDEC. They do their own enrollment projections based on very similar factors. And then the town will need to demonstrate a community authorization of funding to proceed into the feasibility study. And the the date on this again is is from last year. So this would need to go to the town meeting in May of 2023 if we get through this this process. At that point, we would go into the feasibility stage of the MSBA process. Next slide, please. And this kind of shows you all the different stages of the process. The light blue is the role of districts and the green are when you have construction professionals in. But it it starts with the eligibility period and then goes through forming a project team, getting into the feasibility phase, schematic design, funding the project, detailed design, construction and completion of the project. And they estimate that this, all of these phases would take seven years from beginning to end. And that's based on that, we've been estimating if we pursue this process and this funding, if we were to be welcomed into the process, that it would take us until 2030 to complete our project. Next slide, please. So our statement of interest is based on Cunningham School. It represents all of our elementary schools, but our our response is just focused on Cunningham School. And it's just a unique nature of the SOI system and process that you have to identify a core school. And so we identified Cunningham School because there had been more classrooms, non-classroom spaces converted to classrooms at the time that we went into this process. But it is very much an example of of the overcrowding that we're experiencing in all four schools. And throughout our SOI, we talk about the overcrowding in in all four schools. And the priorities that we're submitting for are priority two and priority four. A priority two being existing severe overcrowding. And priority four, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollment. So those are our priorities. Our previous submittal used a baseline with updates from 22, 2022 facility modifications and and updates on enrollment. We updated with existing conditions, things that have changed since last year, measures taken to mitigate the problem and just updating our application and the impact of overcrowding on our district's educational program. And we talked also about, and and it was, it's been interesting to go through this year after year that in previous years, we had identified projected spaces that needed to be converted. And each subsequent year, those spaces had already been converted. So we just sort of added those to the the spaces that have been converted and and to see that this is continuing on. Next slide, please. So the existing conditions that we talk about in the in the statement of interest really focus on the elementary enrollment growth since our last school building project, which had 1,873 students in 2008. And now I believe it's 23, 2,323 students in 2022, or an increase of 450 students or 24%. And as as we've all seen, from being in the schools and the the video that we've shared about overcrowding in schools, that that we are really feeling it in in all all of our buildings. Our elementary schools were built for 14 strands, which means that 14 classes for each grade across the four elementary schools. And currently, we are four classes short of having 17 strands for every grade. So it just gives you a sense of how how many classrooms we've created out of nothing, basically. And we we are keeping on doing the best we can. We had an elementary space needs study conducted by DRA, the architects who designed our current school buildings that they did for us back in 2019. And based on their study, they said that we will have a shortage of 26 classrooms in 10 years based on our projected enrollment, which is conservative. So that's really the number that we've been looking at in terms of anything that we might build that we know we are are want to plan for 26 classrooms more than we have right now to be able to accommodate our our enrollment in the future. As I mentioned, we've already converted a lot of non-traditional spaces, over 20, with a few more projected for for each year. And we are going to pursue measures necessary to acquire, engineer and install portable classrooms this year. We Facilities Advisory Committee just met a couple of weeks ago and agreed that it was time to to bring in a consultant to help us determine what would be required to to bring in portable classrooms. And we'll learn a lot more about that in the coming months. Next, please. So what the measures to mitigate the overcrowding have been so far is, as I mentioned, the Elementary Space Needs Study that looked at short and long-term options, formation of school building committee, which was established three years ago by town meeting. Largely, we have reverted, resorted to conversion of non-traditional classrooms, non-traditional rooms to become classrooms. We are seeing growing class sizes, shared and overcrowded offices and libraries and and gyms that are chopped up. And of course, votes taken by the School Committee and the School Building Committee, most recently to build a new upper middle school with a pre-K wing to address the overcrowding. Next, please. And we also talk a lot in the SOI about the impact of overcrowding, expanded class sizes, making teaching and learning more difficult. Cafeterias and libraries are strained and compromised. Limited ability to develop programs, particularly for special needs students to to stay in Milton for programs that they need rather than costly out-of-district placements. Our art and music programs are largely compromised with traveling teachers or teachers on stages and and other sort of not non-optimal situations. Our computer labs have been eliminated, our playgrounds are overcrowded, the restrooms are limited and overtaxed. Many adult classrooms, restrooms have been converted to restrooms for students. Our offices are crowded, minimizing time available for both testing and service delivery because of being able to maintain confidentiality and privacy for those services. And teachers' common planning time has has largely been compromised with with really very little, if any, space to to meet. Next, please. So in terms of our expected future enrollment, the NESDEC projections are conservative, as I mentioned. They're based on, the most recent projections were based on the 2122 school year. They are conservative in that they assume a level birth rate. And one of the things that that is kind of a constant in our reports that we get from NESDEC is showing the difference between the kindergarten entrance and the birth rate five years ago and how there is a a real split there that the number of students, children who were born five years ago and the number that show up five years later for kindergarten, that number that show up is is substantially larger. And so it it just demonstrates that young families are moving here to have their kids come to our schools. And and the likewise, the NESDEC projections do not include the student yield of the numerous residential construction projects that we have in the approvals pipeline in in Milton. And as we know, there are many seven or eight 40B projects that are currently in the in the pipeline and plus other residential construction projects for a total of 640 new housing units that are on their way. NESDEC cannot count those in their projections until those projects have been approved by the planning board. So as they make their way through the town approval process, then they will show up more clearly in our NESDEC projections. Next slide, please. So this is just a one of one of the graphs that we share in our in our statement of interest. It just shows the enrollment history and projections for grades pre-K through 12. And as you can see, it starts in 2008, when our last school building project ended with 3,782 students district-wide, pre-K to 12. And this year, we're at 4,409. Three years from now, it's projected to go up to 4,418. And go going out to 2032, NESDEC projections show a slight dip, but 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 modest one. But bear in mind, it again assumes level birth rates and it doesn't take into consideration all of the housing projects that are in the pipeline. So we know this enrollment growth is here to stay. And we need to plan for it accordingly. So next slide is the motion that we will need to approve for submission of of this SOI. And I will just read it for everyone's, for all of our purposes. And then we can open this up to discussion. So make a motion to approve the submission of the statement of interest to the School Building Authority. And having convened in an open meeting on April 27, 2022, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Milton, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form to be submitted to the MSBA by no later than Friday, August 20, April 29, 2022, for consideration in 2022. For the Cunningham Elementary School located at 44 Edge Hill Road, Milton, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. And priority four, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments. The elementary enrollment in Milton Public Schools has grown by 24% of 450 students over the past 14 years, since the last school building project was completed from 1,873 students in 2008 to 2,323 students in 2022, far exceeding the capacity of Milton Elementary School Buildings. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I have a second, please.
I'll second it.
Great, thank you. If we can stop sharing your screen, Lizzie, and then we can open it up for discussion. Great, thank you. Thanks very much. Any questions or comments?
Just, I think, a point of, I think I understand it, but I just want to make sure that it's clear, that the Cunningham is just being used as an example, you said, right? But it's really, it's a case example of the overcrowding that's happening overall.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a little bit awkward when we first were applying because we couldn't figure out, it wasn't just this one school. And and especially in Milton, we have a practice that that we talk about in the in the statement of interest where new families who come in, we we look at how many students we have in each grade and each class, trying to keep class sizes at a reasonable level and give families the option to have their children go to another school if their neighborhood school is already full. And by doing that, it has helped us to maintain a level class size across the town, which has been great. It's just that we have more classes than we have room for across the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. So I'm not sure if if you can answer this question, but something I'm just sort of wondering, knowing that we have applied two times before unsuccessfully. I know that the important change of rethinking the model and, you know, planning towards the the middle school as an alternative to a fifth elementary school, that's a change since the last time that we applied last year. But I guess I'm wondering, sort of, are there other changes or things that we've been able to update or add based on, you know, to try to strengthen the application? I know that the applications are always relative. It's, you know, you're putting your application into a pool of other districts. And then the MSBA looks at priorities and sort of assesses where the greatest needs are. So on some level, you know, it, like, our chances depend on what other districts put forward. But I guess I'm just wondering, like, have we been able to revise and improve our proposal to feel like we have a more compelling case this time than we may have been able to make in the past?
That's a great question. Well, one of the things, I know Superintendent Jet has talked about this. And Superintendent Jet, you might want to add in that that has has put us in maybe not as strong a situation compared with other districts is that we have managed to maintain the quality of education and that our our students managed to maintain a quality of education and that our, our students um, have their educational programs have not suffered as much as other school districts have. And that's just the nature of, of, again, it's a competitive process. Um, and, and there's that. And um, I know, um, one of our uh, meetings with the senior team from MSBA, uh, I think it was probably in our first year. Um, one of the people commented, well, you haven't gone to portable classrooms yet, so you must not be in that much trouble. And it's like, oh, well, we've really tried to avoid that because of the, the, they're very, very expensive. And we really have tried to um, get around that as much as we could. But I, I, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I, I think we're getting to the point where we really do need to examine that, that option, because this is going to go on for at least a number of years before we get a, a, a school building built. Superintendent Jed, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Yes, those are the exact reasons, academic output um, or achievement. Um, and then some of the districts, they only approve, but so many districts a year, and it may vary year to year. And it depends on the condition of the buildings. And when you look at our buildings, all six of our buildings are either new or renovated as of eighteen, nineteen years ago. So when our situation is not as, as dire as, you know, some others. And um, and then uh, I, I believe those are the two major factors that they continue uh, to share with us. And then um, many of our uh, we talk about the, the portable classrooms. You are absolutely right. I couldn't believe that they said that. It's almost like we have to do poorly and put ourselves in a bigger situat- a worse situation even before they consider it. Um, but who knows? Uh, they, they accepted some, some schools last year. Maybe the third time is the charm.
So I guess I just have a quick follow-up to that then, which is not for tonight, but I will just sort of put it for a parking lot. Um, I know I've heard Sean O'Rourke allude to our options, you know, and that pursuing this through the MSBA is one option. It takes eight years, as you said. And our chances are, you know, slim, given all these factors. So I guess assuming that we vote tonight to proceed and, and put this application in, you know, I think we should, I don't recall the timeline in terms of how long we have to wait to hear back from them, but it seems prudent to, and I know the school building committee is doing this, but we just haven't really discussed it as a school committee yet in terms of, well, like, what other options are we exploring? Um, kind of in the meantime, for the, for, you know, a path towards funding the school. Even as there's another sort of parallel track of the portable classrooms, that's also needing to happen. So just to acknowledge, you all are like, you know, you're really multitasking on these different pieces, but um, I just don't want us to keep losing time, you know, in the process, more than we have to.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, it is, you know, our having made the decision um, recently around uh, pursuing a middle school rather than the elementary school will um, helps the school building committee in um, cost, doing cost estimates for what a new building would cost. And there is a team that is, is ready to roll up their sleeves and, and really start uh, getting an analysis done on, um, you know, it, the, the amount of money that it will cost if we wait the seven years of the school building authority funding versus if we were able to do it without MSBA in a shorter time, it may wind up costing the same, but we could have a school faster. So it's, it's an analysis that, that we're all anxious to see completed, but um, being able to know what it is that we're going to build was a, a key element of that. And that was a big part of why we, we um, made that, that move to, to um, to build a, make a decision about the, the middle school option as, as a solution for all of the grade levels, not just the elementary, because as time has gone on, we're seeing the enrollment is not just in the elementary grades, it's in the middle school and, and now up at the high school as well. Uh, member Dan, Russ Denny?
I just want to clarify one point that I think Sean made during a prior presentation, that it's not a one-for-one um, funding solution. It's, I think it's, I think he said twenty cents on the dollar, I could be wrong. So just for the general listening public, our necessity of building a school, while it would be ideal to get this funding because it's, it's like a discount, right? If, if we can get other funding. But it should not be the reason to deter us from proceeding with this project because the need for the new building will still be there. And to Ada's point about the delaying of the building increased the cost, which might negate any benefit from getting this, this funding. So just making sure that people have the perspective that the need is still there. And whether or not we receive this funding should not be a deterrent to proceeding with the project.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Jed?
Uh, number Russ Denny touched upon it, and I would just add, it definitely will cost more the longer we wait. In addition to paying for a building, in the interim, we're going to be paying for portable classrooms. There could be in excess of three hundred thousand dollars apiece over a course of X number of years. Not to mention, those portable classrooms will have to go somewhere on uh, MPS property or in the vicinity of, which then takes away more space um, that our students may have in terms of uh, movement breaks, recess and things like that, particularly at some of your elementary level uh, schools. So I just share that piece as well.
Exactly. Thank you. Dr. Miranda?
Yes, uh, so just, uh, I think just following on um, Dr. Carol's uh, comment, um, in that we sort of some, the submission of the SOI does not tie our hands in terms of being able to follow a parallel process by which we could look at alternative financing for the school so that we don't lose a year as we sit and wait and find out, you know, in a year that yet again, we're, we haven't been selected. So is that, is that correct, that we can do sort of a parallel process? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions? We ready to take a vote then? As we have a motion on the floor that was quite long, um, I won't repeat it for you, but uh, seconded. Uh, do a roll call vote. Uh, member White?
Yes.
Member Russ Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member, member Vargis?
Yes.
And Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Chair Rose Marin?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Now, let me just see what we got on the agenda here. Uh, oh, we have finance on our agenda, finance subcommittee. And uh, member White, would you like to share that one with us?
Sure. Um, we met yesterday afternoon and the major topic was um, to review the current bus contract because Amy and the administrative offices have to send out the information for parent signup in the next week or so. So um, I don't know, Amy, if you want to share your screen with the um, options that you discussed with us yesterday? And while you're, and while you're doing that, I will just say that five years ago, when we had a previous override, one of the things that we did as a school committee at that time was to reduce the bus fees for families and also to reduce the amount of money. Um, students were um, required to, for clubs and activities. Um, and so we haven't really increased the um, bus fees for five years. They're currently at two hundred and seventy-five dollars per rider. That does not include the um, the population from K through six who live a certain distance from schools, and we are required to provide transportation for them. And it also does not include students who are eligible for um, transportation based on their eligibility for free and reduced lunch. So currently, um, the contract that we have for the buses has a inflation clo- clause in it. And Amy has um, put in a three percent increase into um, this coming school year's um, uh, transportation costs. But given the fact that the price of gasoline and the difficulty in getting um, bus drivers to um, transport our children, we're thinking that we really need at this time to increase the um, the bus fees. So Amy, um, if you want to just discuss a little bit of this, and then I will um, let people know what the subcommittee recommended.
Sure. Um, can you see this spreadsheet okay? Is it large enough to read?
Yes.
So I'm going to first start down here on the bottom left. This is a history of um, the bus fees that we have um, been charging those students who ride. Um, we are legally mandated to transport children in grades K through six who live two or more miles from their assigned school, free of charge. So um, these fees are for those who are um, either in K through six that live more than two miles or in grade seven through twelve who choose to use the bus. Um, anyone who qualifies for free or reduced lunch also rides free. Um, so if you see here, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, the fee was three hundred and fifty dollars a year. Um, it went up in the thirteen, fourteen range to three seventy-five and stayed there until two thousand sixteen, seventeen. In uh, May of two thousand seventeen, um, there was an operating override. Part of that override was to reduce the bus fees by a hundred dollars a year per rider. Um, so we have been at that level since two thousand seventeen, eighteen um, through the current school year. Um, I also would like to mention that we cap it at five hundred and fifty dollars a family, meaning if you have two paid riders, um, but you have a third student that also rides, they ride for free. Um, and then over here on the right is just some comparable districts that will, um, Milton tends to um, use in analysis when we are comparing to other school districts. These communities in, um, the highlighted in blue all charge more than Milton. Um, they average about three hundred and sixty-four dollars a year if you took an average of all of these. And then all of these on the bottom are um, less than what Milton currently charges. Um, there are some that charge a late fee. If you um, register midway through the year, they charge an additional fifty dollars per rider. Um, up here on the top is where I'm just showing some different options of what it would look like we um, were to increase the fee. This column here is um, the current fee of two seventy-five a year. We have approximately fifteen or sixteen hundred riders, but only about six hundred and sixty-nine of those are paid riders. So we bring in about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a year at this fee. Um, but the current contract um, that I budgeted for with a three percent increase for inflation cost the district about eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand a year. So right now, six hundred and eighty-five thousand of that is um, being supported by the tax rate or the um, operating revenues. If we go up to three hundred dollars, that um, brings in almost seventeen thousand more, three twenty-five brings in about thirty-three thousand more, three thirty, thirty-seven, and three fifty, fifty thousand more. Um, so if you see, it looks like significant percentage increases. But um, the cost per day per rider currently is around a dollar fifty-three per rider. That's a two-way ride. And these are the different rates if we were to increase it. Is that good, Betty, or? Can't hear you.
Okay, um, so what we discussed yesterday and what we're recommending to the um, school committee tonight for a vote is to raise the fee to three hundred and twenty-five dollars per rider. We thought that was kind of the middle ground and that that would be um, you know, what people felt comfortable um, with recommending at this time. So just wanted to open it up for some discussion or any questions.
I do want to share for the viewing public, we were very sensitive to the fact that um, cost of living increases on many of our expenses as households have been increasing at a higher rate than, than our um, our salaries might be increased. But for those who don't have children on public, on the bus, this is a one-year, once a full school year fee. This is not a monthly fee. So in, in total value, while it might be a fifty-dollar increase, it's one, it's for the entire school year, but two, we don't have any control over the gasoline prices, which um, Amy alluded to. And while we have a contract, there's no guarantee that they, the provider won't have the ability to increase the cost associated with it, to exceed what we've estimated. So it's future-proofing us for the school year, um, knowing that it's just a one-time fee.
If, if I could just um, add to that, so um, as member Ross Denny mentioned, um, the majority of why we're seeking this increase is because of the increase in fuel costs. There's a fuel um, clause in the contract with our um, bus provider that as fuel goes up, they can charge us a surcharge every month in addition to what they agreed upon contractual um, rate per buses per day. Um, fuel cr- prices have increased significantly, more than eighteen percent, as you all know. Um, so in light of that, this is a modest increase. And I just want to point out, this isn't saving. This is bringing in additional revenues to try to cover some additional costs that we anticipate for next year so that it doesn't cause a, a budgetary issue. Um, as we don't have control over if gas prices stay the same, or if any of your children um, ride some of the buses, you'll know we had um, an issue this week where we were short a driver and didn't have a substitute. There's a nationwide um, shortage of bus drivers. And keeping that in mind, you don't know what the, the um, pay rates, in order for them to attract people who would like to be drivers for next year, those could also increase.
Chair Rosemary, and then Dr. Carol?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, to add in too, that, that the this modest, what we saw as a sort of middle-ground, modest um, increase um, is different from what we did in twenty seventeen that we held steady for five years. I think there's a, a, an assumption that, and people should understand that it's very possible that it may have to go up next year. That, you know, we're not sure if this is going to um, be enough, but, but we felt that it was a reasonable amount to, to start with.
And if I could just add one thing, I realized that I don't think was um, added to the motion was, was the family cap mentioned? If it increases to three twenty-five, we'd also be seeking an increase in the family cap to be six hundred and fifty dollars per family, which is that paid to riders.
Thank you.
Dr. Carol, and then member Vargis?
That was my question that Amy just answered. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Member Vargis?
Um, I just wanted to um, clarify that, so this increase from two seventy-five to three twenty-five would be for one school year, correct? And if the price goes up or the cost of fuel or anything like that goes up, it could go up potentially or stay the same, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else have a question or comment?
Dr. Carol's here?
Oh, I don't see her. All right.
My comment is just that it's helpful to see the history of the fees and to consider that what we're talking about for this increase you've proposed would still be under where we were more than ten years ago. So shed perspective and context.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
And I second.
Okay. So I will take a roll call. Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Oops, I just lost, hold on a second.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Chair Rosemary?
Yes.
And I think we lost Member White. It'd be her chance to vote.
Hopefully she'll be back soon. Okay, there was, until Member White comes back, there was a, a second item on the finance report to look at athletics, but it was Assistant Superintendent Dexter said that they need to do some more research on that and examining. I don't know, Superintendent Dexter, if you'd like to explain that?
Sure. So Athletic Director Ryan Madden prepared a pretty in-depth analysis of the athletic fees. It's pretty significant that I would like to have more time to sit down with him and Superintendent Jet to really go over it to make sure that what we're putting forth as a proposal makes sense. The bus fees were time-sensitive so that we can get the registration out for next year. Athletic fees, we have some time with that. So we want to make sure we put in all of, and do all of our homework and make sure that what we put forward makes sense. So we, you know, decided to ask to defer that discussion till a later date.
Sounds great. Thank you. Superintendent Jack, can you promote Betty, please? She's in the attendees pool, and then she can come back and make her vote, and we'll be all set.
Sorry, I just did, I was texting her and asking if she was able to get back on. If not, should she abstain, or I take the vote for her, but?
No, I, I will, I'm voting yes.
Yeah.
This is a new computer, it's not supposed to do this. I don't know what happened.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you, thank you, Member White, for, for your report. Thank you, everyone. And entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Do I need to take a roll call vote for that? Yes, I see, yes. Okay, Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Marin, yes. That's it then. Thank you, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.